The September 17th meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole Review of 2019 to 23 Capital Improvements Program and 2019 Capital Borrowing. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spate?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Kitzler?
Here.
Alder Groupie?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Alder Moore is excused.
Okay. For Alder Groupie, who hasn't gone through this delightful experience before, this is basically, each department head comes and makes a presentation about what their capital budget request is. So they each get a period of time where they can do that and we can ask questions or whatever. And then you'll have an opportunity to ask further questions when it's actually on the agenda to be approved, which will be in October.
Okay.
So we're going to do several of the shorter ones tonight, and then on Monday, we're going to be, I think we've got four or five, Mark?
Correct.
Others, including the longer ones, Public Works and Parks and whatever. So first of all, Mark will do a overview for us, and I think everybody got the handout of his slides. Like to follow along. I guess Jake isn't interested in that, huh?
No.
Okay.
So I'm going to start here in the capital budget. Before we get started, you know, what we were looking at when we sat down with the mayor and kind of figured out what our goals was, one of the goals is, you know, there's the long-range facility, you know, one of the goals is, we've been talking the last couple of years here, is public safety building and then eventually a future community center, senior center building. So let's, when we looked at that, that was one of our things is, what can we do to, you know, to afford that with our, you know, debt limits? So one of the things we asked each department head, is what we were trying, our goal was to get to $2 million excluding Bridge Road, because we knew that was kind of required to do with going with the TIF project and any TIF costs that was involved. So I do have a slide in here. We do get to that amount. We basically get to, once we subtract everything out, the Bridge Road and the TIF cost, we get close to the two, a little less than $2.1 million. So we did hit our goal to get to that amount with the non-TIF and non-Bridge Road amount. So that was one of our goals. So we did hit that. Reason why, you know, like I said, we just want to make sure we got enough capacity eventually, if we're going to do a public safety building, is to hit that. So that was our goal, and there's ways, we'll get into detail how we got to that goal. There was, you know, things we had, we cut to make that goal, and we did have to add some stuff in there, too. There was stuff added in there, too, for other projects, but we did get close to that amount. So if everybody's familiar, there is a, what they call a debt limit. Each municipality falls under the same rule. You're only, you're only allowed to borrow up to 5% of your equalized value. So our equalized value, the spreadsheet she chose is 1.1 million, 1 billion 326 million 599,300 is what our equalized value is. So we're allowed to spend, we're allowed to borrow up to 5% of that. That amount is equivalent to 66 million 329,165. Our total outstanding debt projected as of 12/31/18 is 51 million 530. And we can reduce in there, we can reduce what we are going to spend in principle next year, so we can reduce that balance by the 5 million 5,000. So to get our net obligated debt outstanding is 46,000, 46 million 525,000, and that's kind of where we're starting with the debt limits. So that frees up capacity of almost $20 million, 19 million 804,000. This might not match, I know Doug brought this up in the auditor's report, there was some kind of different numbers. Couple of changes from there is that's as of 12/31/2017. That also does include the most recent equalized value, I believe, and it also, also there's these bands that we borrow for. I don't know if you remember from the last time Jeff was here, we borrowed bond anticipation notes, basically like a three to five-year note, and we eventually refinance those into long-term debt. They officially are not counted against the debt limit, but I do include them in here because we eventually have to refinance them, so we eventually have to count them against her. So I include that. So if you kind of look at where they're at, what they gave us, and match it up, it's going to be hard to match it up unless you include the bands in there. So I just did that because I wanted to be conservative, because we will have to refinance those and go long-term debt, and they will hit the levy limit. So it gets us here to the debt limit unused of the $19 million 804. There is some required borrowing coming up in TIF 9. We will be coming here eventually fairly soon. We just approved the capital purchase of, or capital improvement for the street and parks. We still have the shelter that's coming, and we still have some other costs that wasn't budgeted for, borrowed before, we'll borrow at once, and it'll be some capitalized interest and developers' agreements are in this number that are required, paid for, and that's estimated to be about 8.8 million. That's basically what we have to borrow here in near future. So what's really available, and we want you to back that out, is the $11 million 400,000, 5,000.
Is the 8.8 million all in 2019?
Basically 18 and 19, so we'll be borrowing here fairly soon, and once the two projects are done, what's there supposed to be done as of 2019, the hotel and the Dorn's project, then we'll borrow for those. So that's, once they're completed and they meet all the requirements, we'll pay that next year. So the funds available, we're borrowing, so $11 million is available. The budget is 3.9, is what we proposed, so leaves about $7 million for the future use. As a 2020 payment, you can kind of add that on to the $7 million for the future. We're repaying back 5.5 million dollars in 2020. Also in there, I probably went a little conservative, what's kind of, what's going to come from the equalized value. I'm hoping Dorn's project, or the project comes in, equalized value higher than maybe expected, and the hotel, that's some other construction. So that number is just going to grow. So that's really, new construction is big when it comes to equalized value. Here's our breakout of our current debt by each different category. The city is basically your general obligation, which, or general borrowing, which is basically your streets, your parks, anything that's not into TIF. On most sites, either going to be parks or, or these streets. TIF 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, or, so TIF 4, if everybody's aware of that, is, we call that Manono Drive. That was used to pay for Manono Drive. TIF 5 is Garden Circle MSP Project. TIF 6 is UW Meritor Clinics. TIF 7 is Fairway Glen. TIF 8, which is Trista. TIF 9 is the Riverfront. And we do have, sometimes we do borrow storm, usually borrow general obligation, and sometimes sewer and water, we do borrow with general obligation. But a lot tend to be borrow with revenue bonds. It's based on kind of how big we have to borrow for sewer and water if it goes into a revenue bond or general obligation. Revenue bonds are utility and wat, most, those are utility and waters debts. We do have that debt outstanding, too. And they get, the revenue bonds and the sewer, storm and water all get paid through the rate system.
Mark, not to get on a sidetrack, are we closing TIF 7? With the 250,000, are we paying that off?
So three, so basically you're paying about 100,000, 75, is it 75,000 per year, roughly?
Oh.
100,000, so in about three years, we could close it off. I would probably recommend right now, that would be one thing we can, would do.
Gotcha.
Because if you're going to do another project there, you could just start to, probably want to start the clock over again. This is just, I should have put percentages in here. This is kind of just showing where, all that, we just showed where all the debt is coming from, of our outstanding debt. So the red is basically your TIF, your general obligation again, which is your streets, your parks, any non-TIF, fire and police. That is the yellow, the utilities, which is mainly, water and storm makes up the majority of that balance that's there. So here's your future debt payments out through the year 2025. As you can see, there's some larger debt payments coming. We will be starting paying back a large amount in TIF number 5, which is Garden Circle. There's some large debt payments coming in fairly soon. And here's kind of the breakout of per year, 19 to 25 balances those numbers. As you can see, there's, we'll be paying some larger sums in the TIFs in the near future. So that's our debt payments per year by each different category. So this is also on your, kind of your page, this is page one. So based on this, so general borrowing for 2019, you had the general borrowing, which is 3.4 million, and you had in the TIF of 4 and 10, 4.4 and 10,000, and then the storm 100,000. If you add all three numbers together, you get to what affects the levy limit, the debt limit is 3.9 million. That's where we get that. So, so total borrowing is there. So if you kind of, oh shoot, if you kind of go back down to the very bottom, the debt capacity, once you subtract out all that out, is $11 million. Unused is $7 million, and it kind of goes forward again. 2020, there's some large items in there, we'll kind of talk about here a little bit. I'm assuming 2020 and 21, there's going to be some tough choices we'll have to make. So I don't think those 5.8 and 5.3, the numbers we'll actually borrow for, but there is some large street projects and some HVACs and some other issues we'll have to talk about if that's in the near future, if that's the route we want to go. Because we do need to free up the capacity here. So if you kind of keep those projects in, 20 and 21, your debt capacity does go down in the $9 million unused for 2020 and 21, $8 million in '22. It's $11 million in '23, we'll start freeing up a lot more, about $17 million. So we'll still have some tough choices here to make in the near future of our borrowing. And so the potential borrowing, things we have to look at is the Riverfront, there's going to be, what, it all goes in there. Any more, if you have another TIF that gets set up, developers' agreement, more TIF projects, future capital projects, any emergency that we needed for. Here's kind of the breaking up, so we borrow for one year at a time for capital projects, debt services exempt from the levy limit. So here's kind of where we've been since 2013 per year. 2013, I wish I would remember what's in 13, it's 5.4, 14, 3.1, 3.9, 2.9. So after 13, which I probably believe is Manono, some finishing up Manono Drive fees, area between Dean and Nichols, I believe that's what that would be. Well, you can see we're trying to keep it around to $3 million, right around that area, which we're trying, trying to do, and it, you know, keeps the, stabilizes the debt payments, too. So major capitals in here, it's supposed to be City Hall, not Hill, Hall. So we'll talk about this one, basically next Monday, this will be Brad, we're talking with this. So 279,000 this year, part of it's for engineering for 2000, I mean, 279,000 for 2019, but there's a lot, there's over $100,000 in there for engineering that's going to relate to 2020. So that'll be a decision we'll have to make if we want to go ahead with most projects. Bridge Road here is a 2.9, 2.1 million for Bridge Road, includes utilities. North Winoqua Lagoon dredging. Part of this is PC, the PC remediation, part of it's just dredging the rest of it. We'll get in detail for that the next meeting, that's with Jake and Dan, both on that project. Annual street projects, 280,000. Riverfront Park, there's some cost of 385,000. We put this on here and it's officially, haven't really approved, the ice skating rick, I believe, and the B-cycle and the park, so I put it in here as a 385 amount. So that's what those 385 is for the Riverfront. For summary, here's the goal, like I said, it's kind of in order. The goal was to keep it at $2 million, exclude Bridge Roads and TIF, kind of we talked about. Before, it's three, almost $4 million, once you subtract out TIF and Bridge Road, we're almost, 2 million, basically 1, 2.1 million is where we're at. There is changes, if you go to page 2, there's a bunch of changes, not a lot of big changes, but we did include some stuff in here from the different departments. The City Hall, the library, HVAC engineering, we did add about, I believe it's 101,000, 105,000. South Winoqua Road upgrades, again, that we'll talk about next week, and that's kind of looking at, you know, sidewalks, bump outs, bump ends, kind of the bike pad that's coming out of that committee. What's being removed from when the departments committees approve, the Capital City Bike Trail was removed, the water meter upgrades was removed with what we call North Improvements and Huska Park, and the city community center remodeling and playing. We'll probably get in more details later on why there was a cut, but most of those were cuts, you know. We're focusing on the public safety, you know, the long-term plan here, so we're trying to make sure we got enough capacity for that. You know, things to think about is the Riverfront, we add more into the public safety building, so just want to reduce borrowing for, you know, future projects. Here's some items for the future to think about when we're looking at this. We talked about this HVAC, the 279,000 that we have in the 2019 budget. Just in 2020 alone, we have 716,000. They'd stranded their plan, you guys, council hasn't seen it yet, but you will see it fairly soon. Some recommendations in there, so that's, we add in the future years, would be over a million dollars for this whole project for the HVAC. So that'd be something that we're really looking at, see if there's a way around what we're doing, but it is going to be expensive. 2020, I talked about, there's three roads that are in there, there's Atwood, which is what's, project with Madison, Manono Drive, which is a portion of Manono Drive has to be redone, McKenna Road. Those three projects added together are basically 2.7 million. There's some bridge replacement that's in the future years. 2020, 21, water meter upgrades, almost 850,000, Winoqua Park, so 2.7 million, Huska Park 1.3, and Stonebridge, roughly 500,000. So there's some bigger future expenditures coming down the line, but that's...
Mark, could you go back to that? So the Atwood Avenue project, I don't know, we need to check with the city of Madison to see if they still plan to go forward, or maybe we already have with their own funds, because they're not going to have federal funds.
Yeah, last time I talked to Dan, he thought that was a goal, so we can...
They're still going to do it?
That's what my understanding of Dan is. But we can double check for next meeting.
I talked to Dan earlier today. The date keeps moving around. I heard 2024 today for Atwood, so it...
Well, the federal, they definitely do not have federal funding that ended up going to, well, more or less Cottage Grove Road and, well, not really Buckeye. Anyway, that, Atwood does not have federal funding, so it's a question of when, until at least, I think 23 or 24 would be the earliest.
Well, that'd be good, because that's about 900,000 out there.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, I have one. What was the assumptions you've made for the growth of the equalized value going forward?
I put about, I believe at 4%, I put in there, especially with, for this next year, and then it went down to 3% after that. So 4% with the hotel and the other Riverfront project, so I did put 4% in there.
If I did the math right, we had about 5% this year?
Roughly, yeah.
And that was what, Trista?
No, it was, majority of this economic change. So that would be just everybody's reassessments, what, majority of that, and some commercial. It all depends on how, how much the assessments are going to go up here in the next couple of years. If it just keeps on growing and growing, so we'll probably have at least higher, probably higher than 5% after, for next year.
Okay, so it's a fairly conservative...
It's a fairly conservative number, yes.
Which is probably the way to do it.
Yeah.
Anyone else? No? Well, thank you, Mark. I guess we'll move to our first presentation, and Leah will talk about information technology. I think that's on page 23. And did you have that page for Jones?
Yeah, I have it. She was last.
Oh, that's right, okay. She's going to talk separately from Leah.
I forgot to put your page in.
I see it how it is.
You're just Jones.
Yeah.
She goes it to me worse.
We are going to miss you when you miss the...
Thanks, Mayor O'Connor. Okay. Okay, so the city does not have an IT professional on staff. We contract with Land Tech Services for our IT services, and I act as sort of the staff liaison for all the departments, and Sarah, Lieutenant Sarah Duman acts as the staff liaison for the police department. So between the two of us, we work with Land Tech in terms of what they're doing, what projects they need to do, what needs to be added, fixed, all that kind of stuff. We try and troubleshoot as much as possible before we have to call them and, or try and troubleshoot things over the phone with them. So that, that's kind of my role in information technology. So if you have really specific questions that I can't answer, I will consult with Land Tech and get you answers for those. The way that I develop the IT budget is twofold. First, we have a pretty extensive computer replacement schedule that is sort of a living document that we keep and work with. We have all the computer users in the city, so basically anyone who has a computer in the city is on this schedule, and they have a classification of what kind of computer user they are, if they're a super user or just sort of your normal computer user. And then based on that, we schedule their computer replacements based on that. So that's the first thing that I use to develop the budget, and then the second thing is I meet with Land Tech and each of the department heads separately to find out what's coming up in their departments, what needs they have, what's working for them, not working for them, and then we compile our budget. So if you look on page 23, I have a summary of the budget items that we need. So computers ironically is probably one of the least expensive things that we purchase in the IT budget. We only have about six replacements for next year, so that's a total of about $5,600. Tablets, we find that as technology improves, we are just using more and more portable equipment. Tablets, iPads, our Public Works crews use tablets in the field to grab maps or get GIS components, stuff like that. So our Parks and Recreation staff is using iPads more and more. They can pull up rosters of kids in the field, they can take the pads with them when they're on field trips or when they're out in the parks with the kids, they can email parents, they can connect with the office, take photos. So we have about $3,500 budgeted for some additional iPads for next year for Public Works and Parks. One of the big expenses that we have for next year, we have about nine servers in the city, and we try and replace those on a schedule because they're expensive, and replacing all nine of them at once would be a huge expense. So we try and rotate that out, and next year, we're going to be in need to replace our police arbitrator server, which is the server that stores all the squad video and body camera footage. So cameras are great, and we're using them more and more, and we have lots of cameras in the city, but the downside to that is that we have to have servers to back all that footage up, so. Second big purchase for next year is actually in Jake's department. It's a software purchase for a Civic Rec program registration system. So currently in Parks and Recreation, they use ActiveNet software to register, do all their program registrations for all of their recreation programs. Civic Rec is a fairly new product, and it's developed by Civic Plus, which is the same company that, that created and maintains our website. So Jake is really, he's, you know, done a lot of, of background and research on the Civic Rec product, and he thinks that the way that it will integrate with our current website will be really helpful and really useful. You know, right now, we have ActiveNet linked to our website, but it's not integrated into our website. This will actually integrate into the website, so people won't have to have separate passwords to go from our website to ActiveNet to register for programs, and I think it'll just be a better, more seamless experience. So there is always a annual user fee, which is in Jake's operating budget. He says the annual user fee for Civic Rec will not be more expensive than the annual user fee for ActiveNet, and the credit card service fees will actually be a little bit less with Civic Rec than with, with ActiveNet. So this is a one-time, this year-only purchase for the actual software of Civic Rec.
Do you know when, are you somebody who had to pay ActiveNet for software when we started with them?
Yeah, he's been, we've had ActiveNet, gosh, for quite, like, since, I want to say 2006, maybe we purchased that. It's been a long time that we've had ActiveNet.
And do you know how much it was by any chance?
I don't, I wasn't here then, but...
Probably roughly about the same price.
Printers and scanners, we, there is kind of a bigger purchase here, $5,600 for a printer, copier, scanner for the Public Works garage, which seems a little crazy, like, how much do the Public Works guys have to print and scan and color? But the downside is that whenever they actually do need to print something, it's generally a big 11-by-17 inch map that needs to be printed in color, and the only way that we have for them to do that right now is to print it at City Hall and then drive up here to get it. So it is an expensive machine because it, it has to be, to be able to have the capacity to do color in 11-by-17, but it won't get a ton of use, so it should last a really long time. So I think it'll be a good investment for the garage. The outdoor pool needs another point-of-service touchscreen for the concession stand. They have one, they'd like two, so that's a $500 expense there. And then under cameras, projectors and other, a big expense there, $12,000 again for Jake. He is looking for cameras for the community center in Main Hall, the lounge and the senior center because of the after-school program. He thinks we need to have all of those rooms cameraable, I guess if that's a word. He needs, he wants cameras in those rooms for that program, so...
Security cameras.
Security cameras, exactly.
And is the library a security camera, or that's a state camera?
So the library, this was something Ryan asked for. He asked for a camera with a projector for the forum room, which is that room across the hall that has sort of the stadium seating, because they do a lot of like cooking demonstrations or craft demonstrations, and he thought it would be really helpful to have a camera that projects so that the people in the audience can see what the presenter is doing, you know, on the desk. There is possibility that he could get funding for that from the Friends group, though, but we did put it in this budget just in case, so...
And I did talk to them, he put it in his proposal to them last week, and I think they're probably going to pay for it, but they won't be deciding that until November, I think, or...
Okay.
Did the library get a new projector this year? Because I know what they did have were really outdated.
I don't think so, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Questions?
Any questions?
The server for PD?
Yep.
When we get a replacement, the one that we replaced, do we get rid of it, or do we keep that?
No, usually, so usually we are, are just moving the servers down the line, so we get rid of the oldest server and then reconfigure the new server. We do that a lot with computers, too.
Anyone else?
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Community Media, Will.
So it starts on page 96. And just so you know, this was paid by franchise fees, so this comes out of his own budgets. But we put it in here still because it's considered capital purchases, but it's not paid through general obligations, it's paid through by franchise fees. And before you start, Stu, this was a discussion we had, and we met with Will, is, we purchased all that stuff just recently with, last week, we had the amendment with the Madison closing, was it MI?
Madison Institute.
So we asked if some of the stuff could be reduced, and you had, you can talk about the response you gave us.
Sure. So yes, as Mark mentioned, the, this is not, this is all... So yes, as Mark mentioned, the, this is not, this is all franchise fees. And currently, this year, the franchise fees are staying, are stable compared to where they were this time last year. So that's good. We have seen a decline since 2015, but, you know, people have been crying wolf about franchise fees going away for years, and they've never seemed to go away. So I'm confident that they will stick around and fluctuate as technology fluctuates with media services, visual services. So we did just purchase about $11,500 worth of equipment from Madison Media Institute, and $9,000, excuse me, it was more, about $13,000 from Madison Media Institute, I believe, and about $9,875 of that purchase was the school district's purchase that we are loaning them for two years as they pay us back. Part of the agreement we have with the school district is they will provide funds each year to help upgrade the AV equipment to the tune of about $5,000. One year it might be $4,000, the next year it might be $6,000. It can fluctuate based on the needs. So we are gonna essentially, through that Madison Media Institute equipment purchase, loan them the money right now for the next two years of purchases of, from that $5,000 each year. So they purchased $9,875, that's two years' worth of equipment upgrades that they, that we are making with them, so to speak. Regarding our capital purchases, our first item is the video storage video server. So as you can imagine, we gobble up a lot of room on hard drives, or A hard drive, if you will, or storage, because of a high-definition video takes a lot of room, and we do a lot of long-form production, two-hour musicals, two-hour, you know, hour-and-a-half choir concerts, two-hour football games. Console isn't as bad because we, it gets compressed right away, but we do a lot of long-form things that take up a lot of room, so we gobble up, we gobble up space constantly. Currently, we are on our second video server. We got the first one, used up all the room. The radio station came along, perfect time to give that to the radio station, then we upgraded to another video server that has more room. And we have since taken that video server and put larger hard drives in that server so that can take up more room. We're now at a point where it's not feasible or really smart to continue to upgrade that one over and over when we know we'll continue to need more space as we go on. So what we'd like to do is, you know, get a more robust server similar to what Land Tech Services use for the city and all of, all of our needs with, with the thousands of documents and different departments uses. And that's larger, more stable, and can be, you can add space far easier than our current server. So that's the biggest purchase that we definitely need to make. The next one's the field cameras. And we are getting, we did get some cameras from Madison Media Institute. So it is quite possible that we may not need to use these computers, or, excuse me, these cameras. But I want to keep the money in there. If one of our cameras does die, if we have to make a purchase because equipment goes down, I don't have to come back here and we don't have to go through an approval process. We'll kind of just leave the money where it is, and if we need the cameras, we'll get them. If we don't, we just won't spend them. I would guess with some of this remote equipment that we have, that's now five years old, that we've been using for everything we do every single day at the high school, all of our events outside of the high school or in the building, that some of that equipment is gonna start to fail, whether it's this year or next, or next year or 2020. Some of the, some of the other gear, I'm just gonna keep going, but that, that would be the reason why I'd want to keep that. Radio station updates would be the next item. And that is, we're going to, we want to put some acoustical tiling on the back wall of the very small, skinny studio so that it softens the room a little bit, makes for a better sound, hopefully is a little quieter for the other people in the main studio. There's a lot, you can hear a lot of noise if you're utilizing the station on both studios. We also are seeing more traffic, so we need a couple of microphones, and there's only one in there now, so I would need a microphone. And then we'd also like to mount them on the wall or something and have it just be an arm that comes up and down, because we're, obviously, we're limited in space in that little closet-type room. So those are some of the, some of the items we want to do there. It's possible, again, with the Madison Media Institute purchase, that we will get some wall baffling, if you will, for free. They really have no use for it, and they've told me I can just take it. So if it works for us, then I won't need to purchase that. And I suspect there'll be a, I mean, I'm not jumping the shark here, I hope, but I'm suspecting that as I go and grab this gear from MMI, and I know, I know the people that I'm dealing with, because I worked with them before, that if they don't see a use for it, and they don't see a reason why anybody would keep it, and it works for me, they'll just give it to me, whether it's, you know, cables and maybe old microphones that no one uses or baffling, things like that. So I think we're gonna get a lot of side things that aren't priced out in our purchase price that we're gonna get just because they have zero use to haul it on a truck to a storage unit as opposed to just let me haul it away type of thing. And the last one is just a video production laptop. The remote productions that we do need, needs a laptop, and ours is on five years and just getting slow as far as what we need it to do. It's starting to, you know, give us the spinning wheel and things like that, so we need to upgrade that so that we're not having issues in the field with our computer. Those are, those are the 2019 items.
Questions?
Yeah, Will, how long do you keep things like football games and plays and...
Well, we keep them forever. We, what we do is, depending, right now, depending on what it is and what we want to keep, we're, we try to minimize what we keep. So we might take the game, the actual switched game where you're switching the camera angles and it's one, one recording of all the, of all the, basically what was broadcast. We take that and we, we might compress it down just a little bit. High-quality, that can go on YouTube. Whatever we put on YouTube after the game is what we'll save. Sometimes we shoot some footage of the game outside of that that we might keep, but we try to get rid of all that because that's, the uncompressed video files are the ones that take up a ridiculous amount of space. And those are the ones we pick and choose what's important to keep and what's not. And I sometimes have disagreements with the students of what they feel is important and what I feel is important, but I try to be amenable to them because it is somewhat of, I think of the community media as somewhat of an archival of the city as far as events and happenings, so.
So do you keep council meetings forever?
Yeah, yeah, there's, we've, I mean, we, we've, except the last, up until 2014, I think when I came here, they were all on DVD, and they still were up until we upgraded the room. But we have been actually been getting rid of, getting rid of the DVDs past seven years. So anything like 2011 or before, we probably don't have. But anything 2000, well, 2014 and above, we have digitally, and we'll probably just keep saving them because they're small files, they're old standard-definition files, which are just, they're very small. Because what we have to broadcast on the channel is standard-definition, that's the old square, right? So, and that video file is far smaller than a high-definition video file.
So you stream in high-definition, but you, on the channel, you broadcast in standard?
In standard-definition. And so we just keep the standard, standard-definition file for archive purposes because it works and it's much smaller, but, but everything else, minus plan, commission, and school board, and council, everything else we keep in high-definition, which is, you know, pretty hefty with the amount of long events we do, two hours and more, the Winnicott Park concerts and things.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. And next is Diane. Keep going up and down here.
And we're still on schedule, Diane, so.
Yeah, and you always take such a long time. Page 87, right?
The portable stage was up, we changed it to $6,000 because it was included in Jake's budget and Diane's budget, we combined them to one. So they get changed back here. We did, we did it, but it did get changed on page five, so it's in the bottom, it's in the bottom, bottom numbers, but just this one page right here, it should have been $6,000, it said $2,700, but it's been changed if you look at page...
This is supposed to read 2019, 2020, instead of 2018?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're looking at two things for 2019.
The first thing, we're looking to replace our square tables. These are the ones that we use for card games, used every single day, and the last time we purchased them was in 2007. So obviously, we're gonna order from the same company, they're high-quality. Right now, they're functional, but like, the bottom, I don't know, plastic pieces are, because they're flipped up all the time, are starting to kind of unglue. So it's time to replace those, so looking to do that in 2019 for $3,000. And then the other thing that both Parks and, or the community center in general and the senior center could use combined is this portable stage. Right now, we use a homemade stage. It's basically old recycling containers and wood that we put on top of it because as our groups have grown, our audiences have grown, we've just needed to get them up on a stage. It's really cumbersome to move, it takes a lot of area to store, and really, it's, frankly, it's not the safest. So Mighty Light, who also, we've been ordering tables from, makes this portable stage, which also has a variation in height. So the other thing I can see us using this for is even using it in the senior center when we have large groups, because we have a low ceiling, we can't use the stage down there. But this particular stage, we probably could use for some larger groups so that people in the way back when we have large groups in the senior center could see an entertainer in the lower level. In my explanation, I just kind of wrote, we use this stage for our holiday events, ice cream socials, Jake's breakfast with Santa, the Easter breakfast. So there's a lot of great community events where we could use the stage.
And Jake and Diane originally had this split.
Correct.
Between them, and I, and I told them, let's, told Mark, let's just put it all under senior center, and so it's just in one place, it's easier to track and everything, so. Anybody have any questions? It's really a...
That's it? Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is law enforcement and emergency communications. Wally and Sarah?
Page 29 is the...
Five-year plan, and page 31 starts the descriptions.
Sure.
Good evening. Pretty much our standard budget, squad cars, we need to replace two cars for 2019. We're looking to replace the 2009 Toyota Camry, and that car's actually gonna be repurposed, apparently by Community Media, and then one of the 2014 Ford Explorers. What's, the Camry is currently a hybrid car, we're hoping to replace that with another hybrid. And in 2019, 20, with the 2020 Ford SUVs, they're supposedly coming out with hybrid version squad cars for the first time. The next item is squad video because we're replacing one of the Mark squads. We try to replace the squad video at the same time, so that's with the latest equipment. And the next item is squad laptop and modem. Again, as we replace one of the squads, we try to replace the computers at the same Next item is our TASER replacement program. Starting in 2011, we started phasing out the older TASERS that were over five years old, so we try to buy at least two every year. Since we've been doing this, they're now like on the third generation, they keep coming up with more improvements. The current TASERS that we're buying now actually have two, two cartridges in them as opposed to just one. So if the first one fails, or if there, or if there's multiple offenders, they have that second cartridge. And the last item in the police budget is portable radio batteries. We're requesting to purchase 30 portable radio batteries and two charging stations. The portable radios that we have now have been in existence and use, constant use since 2012 with the original batteries, and now we're starting to get them where they fail, partially through a shift. So we've replaced a few batteries, but it's time to replace all of them. These same batteries, starting in 2020, we're gonna start phasing out some of the older portable radios, and these same batteries will work in those radios as well. So that and a snapshot version is the law enforcement budget.
Any questions for Chief Osterman?
What?
Hold up your feet.
I just want to say I really enjoyed reading that you're gonna be repurposing one of the vehicles and also the fact that you're pursuing hybrid options. That's great, so thank you for giving us...
Yeah, it does, it does add about $3,500 to the price of the car, and, I mean, hopefully, you hate to be the ones that have the first hybrid police car, but you have to start somewhere, so that's what, we're gonna see what we can do.
Yeah, and Will, since we are getting, gonna be, I guess, trading in the other car, putting it for sale at auction or whatever, Will spends a lot of time in his own vehicle running back and forth between the high school and city hall. So we figured since we had owned that already, if he could use it, it would be great.
Yeah, knock on wood. It's gotta be over 100,000 miles once we turn it over, and that's, the car Sarah drives every day, and to date, it's been a good car, so.
Yeah, so to go two or three miles every day, less wearing his car. Any other questions? Okay, Lieutenant Duman. Is this page 44, Mark, is that right? Or is Wally gonna talk about this?
I think we're gonna do a condo package.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry.
So the first item, this is for emergency communications. Traditionally, all of the contracts that we've had as far as software and things like that have come out of, they weren't, even though they're jointly used probably more by the police dispatch, is also our records department, too. So the costs incurred with managing our record software has traditionally come out of our contract line on dispatch in the operations budget, and it just seemed natural to put that in the communications budget for the records management system replacement. So I will let Sarah explain what that's all about.
So we currently use uniform crime reporting, which is required by the FBI. As of January 1, 2021, the FBI, FBI, excuse me, is going to require national... As of January one, two thousand twenty-one, the FBI, FBI, excuse me, is going to require national incident-based reporting. Our current record system is not capable of that reporting, and so we are having to move to a different record system. So we've been meeting with the other groups in the MPSIS consortium, going through kind of our likes and dislikes of our current record system to try to find a new system that will meet our needs, and hopefully, we'll be able to function as well as our current record system. So with that, there is a, an increase in price that is approximately forty dollars, or forty, I wish it was only forty dollars, forty thousand dollars more than what we're currently paying. And we're looking to finance twenty thousand of that for two thousand nineteen, and the remaining twenty thousand in two thousand twenty.
And could you explain a little bit about the incident-based reporting? We're gonna get more accurate numbers, right?
Yeah, currently, if you have an incident where maybe somebody is battered and there's a disorderly conduct, only one of those crimes actually gets reported under uniform crime reporting. It's the hierarchy of the crime, based on their requirements. The incident-based reporting is going to report all of those crimes. So if you have three crimes, you know, as you're responding to one incident, it's going to report all three of those crimes.
Which I think would be useful for us to.
Right.
Have that information, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think it'll be more accurate, kind of reflect what we're actually dealing with on a regular basis, as opposed to just the highest crime.
Okay.
This is, this project is gonna cost about a half million dollars, they're projecting it to be five hundred thousand dollars. We, of the five agencies, we're the smallest one with the least population, so it's based, population-based, so our share of that five hundred thousand is only forty thousand. And what they want is, they want half the money in two thousand nineteen, and then the other half in two thousand twenty, because the RFPs are actually going out, the RFP is actually going out Monday, so they, they don't expect this to be fully operational probably until two thousand twenty.
So anyone have any questions about this particular item?
Okay, the next item is Mitel phone workstations, and this is kind of a long-winded explanation to this. Since we've switched over to the Tri-Tec CAD, we're getting less and less nine-one-one calls. We had actually given Public Safety two options for the capital budget. Option one was to replace the existing nine-one-one equipment, which has been in service since two thousand seven. And that project would have cost between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with ongoing maintenance costs. What we found is that, since we've been to the Tri-Tec CAD, we're getting fewer nine-one-one calls, because the nine-one-one calls that they used to transfer to us before, they are actually handling them as call takers, putting in the information, and then they'll push the button. You get like this little tiny air horn sound that alerts dispatch that a call's coming in, and then the dispatcher basically just gets the information and then dispatches the officers. We're down to, I have just, up through May, we're averaging probably about two or less nine-one-one calls, hard-line nine-one-one calls a day. I should backtrack. There's two different kinds of nine-one-one calls, for people that might not know this. If you dial on your landline, which is a hard-line connection, the copper connection through, through the phone company, it goes directly to the Manona Dispatch Center, it rings directly there. All the cell phone calls, which there are more and more of these days, those are taken by Dane County. We've never taken cell phone calls. We probably wouldn't be able to handle the cell phone calls if there was an accident on the Belt Line at five o'clock with one dispatcher working if they came directly to us. So with the, 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 more and more people doing away with their landline calls, that has also reduced the number of nine-one-one calls we get directly to us. Of the nine-one-one calls that we do get, most of them are from, I'd say, senior centers, assisted care, people who don't have cell phones. And of those, most of those are for ambulance calls. And if it's an ambulance call, our dispatcher can't, they can't, they can get the basic information, but it's something that we transferred to Dane County, and Dane County does the, the medical dispatch protocol screening of it, because they're the ones, they're the only ones in the county that can dispatch EMS and the ambulances. So of those, approximately two calls we're getting a day, a majority of those calls are being transferred back to the county, and then they dispatch the ambulance and they notify us. So after a lot of discussion through public safety, and also the presentation to the mayor, and we actually met with our dispatch study group, too, which consisted of Alders Wood and the mayor, Mayor O'Connor, and several other folks. The consensus was that it made more, you know, operationally and financially, it makes more sense for us to, we hate to do it, relinquish those nine-one-one calls to Dane County, because we're just not getting the volume to justify buying new equipment. So with that, we're proposing that we'll replace the nine-one-one workstations that are currently in dispatch with two Mitel phone workstations. Mitel is the phone system that we use in the city now, and we're estimating that project cost to be approximately seventy-five hundred dollars.
And these are actually just the phones, right? They're not the whole, like, we just replaced the.
Right, they're not the actual tables and councils. It'll come down to probably having a monitor, a computer monitor. So there're gonna be a computer, another computer, probably another computer, but probably not one that has to be replaced every three or four years, it could probably last longer. And then some sort of a device that they can plug a headset to, or a handset would come off, similar to what City Hall has for, I think Leah has one in her office, and Aileen has one at the front desk. Just a bigger box with buttons on it to call people on, but much less sophisticated than the nine-one-one system would cost.
So maybe this is a good, hard to point to interject, but going back, if you look back at last year's capital budget, in two thousand nineteen, I think it was two thousand nineteen, there was, was budgeted to spend a hundred and fifty thousand on, on the nine-one-one equipment. So as you said, I know it went through Public Safety, and we had the, the study group get together, and it was pretty clear, I think, at that point, with fire and EMS already being dispatched by the county, and with the small number of landline calls, it made sense to make the change, and also, should be pointed out that the police station will still be open twenty-four seven, there'll still be somebody there. The nine, the non-emergency number, you could still call that. I think all those factors together sort of convinced us this was the right thing to do. But if somebody thought, no, it's not the right thing to do, this is where a budget amendment for that hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, I guess, would, I wouldn't advocate for that, but this is, would be the place to do it.
We originally had it to replace in two thousand eighteen, but that was right when we were making the transition to the different CAD system. We wanna see how that worked. We're following, I guess we could call it the Sun Prairie model. They did the same thing. They started with the Tri-Tec CAD, and they, they found that they were getting so many other calls were being screened out, that they switched, and all their calls go to the county now for nine-one-one.
And we did switch all the fire nine-one-one a year or two before, right? Wasn't that initially part of the study group?
It was actually just to have Dane County dispatch the fire department.
Oh, okay.
So we would still, if it was a nine-one-one call reporting a fire on the landline, we would still get those calls and transfer those to Dane County.
Send it to them, yeah, okay. And we still, what is the percentage of our calls to that non-emergency number is huge, right? Compared to the nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Emergency kind of calls, so we definitely need somebody. And they're still dispatching the police.
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
All unified.
You know, I just got back from Canada, I'm, they really liked me, they liked me up there, and I, maybe this is one that followed me home. So the next item is dispatch video system replacement and upgrades. And we've, the current video system was installed in two thousand fourteen, it actually crashed in November of two thousand seventeen, we're out of service for several months. I think it cost us about twenty-five hundred dollars to get that repaired, so it's just time for that to be replaced. So we have currently around fifty-one cameras in the system, and many of those are still old technology cameras, they're not the newer IP-based cameras. So the old system would be, we'd like to keep that on hand as an emergency backup, but we're projecting to replace the system with a larger recorder, more modern recorder with larger amounts of storage, and also start going around and, you know, picking out cameras at City Hall and Public Works that need, that are older, that need replacement. The next item is our radio system update. So even though we don't use this on a daily basis, we're, because it's a communications type of system, this is to, to use the, for the fire department, basically, and Public Works and their VHF system. And it's, this would be a microwave system that would replace the hardwires, the copper wires that AT&amp;T is phasing out. So, I mean, they want us to go fiber, and I think there were some other options, too. Talking to General Communications, installing microwave antennas between the water tower, City Hall, Hose Tower, and the South Town receiver. Those are, for folks that might not know, we have like three, three hops to cover the whole city. So there's a, there's a receiver at the fire station Hose Tower, at the South Town Shopping Plaza, there's an antenna down there that's a receiver. And then the main transmitter is actually on top of one of the water towers off of Manona Drive. And they're all connected by phone lines, so that it picks up a signal of the, the strongest signal, and then it, it transmits that, so everyone can hear it. And it would save us money in the long run, because we won't be paying AT&amp;T for the phone line connections. Okay, and the last thing.
One of the, I have a note here that Chief Eklov felt it would work well.
Yes.
As well, right?
The last item, before I'm eaten by this fly. Oh, Chad, I'm sorry.
That's okay, just a quick question. Is there like a little power backup in the event there's an outage? I mean, I'm thinking that, you know, the one thing that you lose when you go to a wireless system, you know, when the power goes out, the old phones used to work, and wireless phones work, but these microwave things need power. So is that, that sort of, I mean, I assume things like this have battery backups, but I'm just wanting to ask the question.
It's a good question, I believe they do. Our current system has battery backups at both other locations, too.
Okay.
But it's not, they're not gonna be huge batteries that would last, you know, days. I think we'd be in good shape at City Hall with our new generator. I, I thought Dan was talking about maybe a generator, I don't know why they'd have a generator at, I think there's a generator somehow close by to the water towers.
Right.
Because there's cellular connections there, too, that they wanna keep up in case of a power outage. So I think there's, there's, there is some backup power, but I can double-check before we finalize this at the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else, questions about that?
Okay, the last item is the primary dispatch computer, and Sarah's the computer person, I'll let her talk about that.
So as you know, we're a twenty-four-hour center, so these computers are running and functioning twenty-four hours a day. They operate multiple police programs, our record system, our connection with the time system to run data on vehicles and people. And so we've had those on a replacement every two years, just to make sure that we don't experience problems. We have in the past had the computers go down, and it's, we always have a backup workstation, but it never seems to function quite as well as when they're used to a certain computer. So what we generally do is we replace those, again, like I said, every two years, and then we repurpose that computer somewhere else where it's not necessarily used in a twenty-four-hour type environment, but we still utilize that computer, so it's not just going to, to waste somewhere.
Any questions? It's not, thank you.
Thank you.
Page thirty-six.
Just start out with fire protection. The first item, SCBA bottles, that's our self-contained breathing apparatus bottles. The life expectancy, the life on these bottles is fifteen years. We originally got these along with the SCBA, the full packs, in two thousand four through a FEMA grant. Doug had sent me something earlier today, asking why not spread these over a couple of years, purchasing them. We get them all at the same time, then we end up, then they're all, they're all due next year. We can't, we can't use them after next year. They're obsolete at that point, so. One of the things that, over the past couple of years, we have been writing for grants for new SCBAs. We will continue to write for a grant for the full SCBA, but we will have to include this budget item under that, because it's something that we have to have next year. And the FEMA grant requires that, if you budgeted anything towards it, you have to include that in the grant, so.
So the grant would include the whole apparatus, not just the bottles?
Correct, yep, face piece, the backpack. And it would bring us up to, right now, we're two standards behind what the current standard is. So it would, it would, hopefully, it'll put us in a good position that we can purchase and get the full pack for the price of just the bottles. But we do have to replace the bottles at this point, so. Any questions on that one?
It's not.
The next thing is the firefighter protective equipment, I believe. And that's our standard firefighter protective equipment, our, our boots, our gloves, our helmets, our bunker pants, our coats. It's the turnout gear for going into fires. So we, we, they're about twenty-five to three thousand dollars a set, so we try to replace sets every, every so often, every year, so that we're, we keep track of who's, who has what gear, what year that was purchased, and then we, after ten years, it's obsolete, so we have to replace that every ten years. So each, each set of turnout gear gets replaced every ten years, so.
Question? I had one about that. This morning at the staff meeting, the question came up about, is it the FEMA grant? Some kind of a grant that April had applied for, and.
There was a.
Was that going towards some of this?
Um, did we figure out what, that was, that was for the CivMec grant?
Right, CivMec, yeah.
CivMec does a grant.
But it's a safety thing, right?
Safety grant every year. I know one year, we, the DPW bought the i Flush Stations. We have purchased, trying to think, what else?
It's a lot of safety equipment, I believe it is. They said spend ten thousand dollars, you get five thousand dollars, so we can pick an item and you get a reimbursement.
So it wouldn't, I couldn't, this morning, when I, it sounded like you, you were planning on spending that money towards these.
This is one, this is one that we.
That wouldn't really make a difference in this.
We could spend it on, if nobody else has anything.
Oh, okay, so we're not, even if we applied for that, we could spend it on anything safety-related, is that, okay?
Basically.
Okay.
Next item is our radio replacements. So all of our pagers are obsolete at this point, are getting to the end of their life expectancy. We're also looking at purchasing more of the portable radios. They, they go through a lot of wear and tear every day, just the standard use, so, and upgrades into the system. And we want, communications is, is a huge thing for public safety. upgrades into the system, and we want, communications is a huge thing for public safety, so. Any questions on the radio equipment?
I had a note, did you say you're going to try to reprogram the older ones so other departments could use them?
Yes, we, we've got some of the ones that are becoming obsolete that we can reprogram so it would just have our fire channel and our DPW channel. We also are looking at, we think we can get another, I don't know if we want to call it a special events, channel on the Daincom system so that it's, it's a digital, it doesn't have to run through our system. So, when Chad had asked about the microwaves, if we did lose power, we would still have the capability of going, switching over to the Daincom system and utilizing the Daincom system. And then, in the, when you're not going into buildings, it's, the digital works real well. The analog tactical, which is what our channel is and our DPW channel is, that works much better when it's, when you're going into buildings, so. And the last item is the camera system for Engine Two. This is the same system that we're putting on the ambulance that's being built right now. It gives a 360 view all the way around the vehicle, so even when they're driving, they, they can look at the TV screen and see their blind spots. When you turn the left blinker on, it shows the left side of the truck. When you turn the right blinker on, it shows the right side of the truck. When you put it in reverse, it shows the reverse of the truck. But when you're driving, it shows, actually, you get both views. So, it'll be a split screen, so you see the rear camera and you see an overview of the whole truck as you're backing. So, it's, it's what we put on the, the new ambulance that's being built. We'd like to put it on Engine Two also, our two most-used vehicles. I just think it'll increase the safety when we are backing. It does do a recording system, so if it isn't an accident, it will record the accident, and then we have footage of what happened with the accident, so.
Any questions?
Does Engine Two have any cameras on it?
It has, it has a backup camera on it right now, yep. It comes standard with the backup camera.
Anybody else? No questions.
On to EMS.
Page forty-one, it starts based on that page.
The first item is the stretcher replacement. That's our stretcher for the ambulance that's being built right now. We'll be replacing, instead of putting an old stretcher into the brand-new ambulance, it'll have a stretcher, a brand-new stretcher in it. It's used on every call that we transport someone, and so it's, you know, as, as, as they get older, they, you know, they're a mechanical piece that gets wear and tear, and so we're looking at upgrading or purchasing a new one of those. Ambulance should be here end of October, beginning of November. I caution saying that because the engine took so long to get here on time. The anticipated date is somewhere end of October, beginning of November.
And we pay for that upon delivery, or have we paid half or something, or?
We've paid anything yet.
That's on, that's on delivery.
Okay.
Yep, we'll write the check when it comes. Any questions on the stretcher at all?
Why is it so expensive?
It seems like a lot of money for a stretcher.
Well, and it's, it's a power stretcher, so it has a motor in it that raises it up, and it's, it's got a capacity of 300 pounds. So, with that, it allows, it saves the firefighter paramedics backs, because it lifts it up. The, a lot of departments right now are using, they have a easy load. You actually just push the stretcher up to the back of the ambulance. It's got hooks that hook onto it, and then it lifts it up and brings it into the ambulance itself. That adds on another, about $12,000, so.
To the stretcher or the ambulance?
To the, to the stretcher.
Okay.
It's, that's an added piece to it. I've talked with our personnel on whether or not they want it. Our personnel don't think they need that, that piece. They would rather see the money spent someplace else rather than the easy load. So, we've talked about it, and knock on wood, right now, we've, we've had minimal back injuries at this time, so they seem to be doing a good job of, you know, using their legs and proper lifting, so.
Is that you? What?
We'll leave that one later. And then, the last piece is the training equipment for EMS. This is utilizing mannequin heads that we can intubate, arms that we can start IVs on. It gives the crews the ability to train right there at the station during the day to keep up their, their skills on a weekly basis. And the current head that we've got, the mannequin, the intubation head that we've got, is about 20 years old. It's getting, when you intubate it, you perforate the esophagus, which is not what we want to do, so it's time to upgrade to a new one, so.
Any questions? Guess not. Good job, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're done.
All right, Joan.
Oh, yeah.
I know, it's nature.
Page twenty-two. Here's the description.
Yeah, she's part of the IT.
I brought you my, the description, yeah, I'm all over it.
Including an article and everything.
Yeah. This is, this is new technology that's been developed by the Wisconsin Elections Commission to create this electronic poll book called Badger Books. This will be, this will replace the paper poll books that we have currently that we use. There will, at least in the beginning, need to be the paper poll book for a backup in case there is a power outage. Voting continues when there's a power outage at this point right now. There's an auxiliary bin that ballots go into that they are not counted at that moment, but they are hand-counted at the end of the night should the power outage not be resolved. So, this is, reduces the staffing at a polling place by close to half. The big, the biggest benefit of these is the data entry. They are not connected to the internet, but they are connected to each other so that voter numbers are distributed in a sequential manner. But the data is entered directly into the system by an election inspector or possibly by a voter. I don't have the exact process down yet for a voter who needs to register and a voter who needs to vote. The screen prompts the election inspector, now I have Willie's fly-
It knows who's talking.
The screen prompts the election inspector on their process, ask for ID, state your name and address, tells them what to do. Then the screen is turned so that the voter can sign. When the election inspector then turns the screen back and verifies that signature and everything is copacetic with that voter, a voter, they click done and a paper voter number is printed out. That's taken to the ballot table just like now by the voter, and they get a ballot and they vote. The voter's participation has been recorded then, and it's done. No data entry by City Hall at the end of, you know, in the next following weeks. Voter registrations are the single biggest error generator and are in the process of voting because of the number of fields that need to be filled in, the type of information that needs to be collected, and this is going to solve that for us because the voter cannot go forward in the process of voter registration until they complete each step correctly. It verifies, you know, that they've, they've got a proper form of proof of residence that will also prompt the election inspector to make sure that they are taking a proper form of proof of residence. The voter does this right in the regular lines with the rest of the voters. Voters walk in, there's no more alphabetical split of poll books. Voters walk into each station, whatever station's open, they walk up to it and vote. Absentees are done on a screen where the election inspector can enter each one like a screen full, and I have not found out if then voter numbers are generated for those ballots. But what that does is they're in sort of an in-bulk process of absentee ballots at the polling place. That is another huge logjam for us at a polling place. And in large elections, we've taken to pre-processing absentees up to the point of opening the ballot. That entails 10 election inspectors working a nine-hour day to get those done. The, McFarland has offered me to come and, and with some inspectors and play with their equipment. I've seen it demonstrated several times, and it just looks amazing. My concern, I want to find out from McFarland whether four at each election or each polling place is going to be enough, but I want to see what she says because she's going to have then an experience of a large election using the e-poll books, so I'm very excited about it. Is there any questions about that? Yeah?
I have a question. So, I know that a lot of the election inspectors are older adults-
Mm-hmm.
-and I just wanted to know if you thought that this would be accessible to them as far as the technology or if there would be training opportunities provided for them so that they would be sort of on par and ready to go?
Yes. There will be less election inspectors on staff than I have now, unfortunately. That's, that is a drawback somewhat, but this system is very, very user-friendly. I mean, it's, it's pretty hard, it, as I said, it prompts the election inspector of what to say in a speech bubble. It, you know, it has clear instruction to the voter, too, and it, it's basically what you do when you use your debit card at a store kind of thing, so.
And Joan always does lots of training.
Yes. Will do training, and I think, I did hear that one of the communities that uses the ebook had, they didn't have a lot of training ahead of time, but the election inspectors picked it up within like the first five voters. They knew what they were doing. It's very simple, so. It eliminate, there's, state statute was changed so that there was only, there only needs to be one election inspector at each polling station. Right now, the law is two if you have paper books, so that's where the staff savings comes from that, so. The process for the voter is the same, and it's really kind of the way things are going, everything is electronic now, so this is one more step toward that, I guess. And, yeah, I'm really excited about it. Every time I've seen it, I've been like, oh, my gosh, this is great. And clerks had quite a bit of input in the design, the function, and the Wisconsin Elections Commission continues to update it, improve it, and there will be updates ongoing with this.
And you'll receive those or you'll pay for them, or?
No, no, they're going to update, it's not upgrade, it's update, so there's no cost. And I think they assumed that these would last about seven years, each one, could be longer. Yeah, there's not, not a lot of downside, it's just going to be the learning curve for me too, so, yes.
So, you don't actually vote on them though, right?
No, you vote on a ballot just like you do now.
Okay, and are they accessible to somebody with disabilities to be able to use?
Yes, just as the poll book is now. If a voter is unable to sign the poll book, they can either make any kind of mark that they are able, their assistant can sign for them, or if they are totally unable to sign, an election inspector writes in the poll book exempt from signature requirement by the election inspector, by order of the election inspector, and that, I believe, is an option on the screen. So, the voter is not forced to do anything they're unable to do, and it is a finger keypad or probably a stylus will get for the signature, so.
Okay. And it's not connected to the internet except for when data is uploaded?
Yes.
And that's, is that uploading, it's not uploading votes, it's just uploading who voted?
Yes. No, no one's actual vote is connected to them in any way.
Right.
So, you're, we have total anonymity-
Yeah, right.
-and that is in the voter machine.
Okay.
All of that data is, is going to be, that's a sort of the next portion of my request. So, that data is, is there. The actual participation is what's being recorded on the Badger Book.
Okay, and then the last question, what happens if it crashes on Election Day?
As I said, there is going to be, there's going to be a backup paper poll books-
Okay.
-and it can continue. We'd have, I assume, backup voter numbers, and we'd be able to keep going. Just like now, we do have that system in place for any kind of power outage. We just keep going. Voting doesn't stop, so it will, it'll keep going. Kind of hoping it'll prove itself enough that we don't have to print a poll book because they're 300 pages apiece, and if we want to go a little green, that, you know, it's kind of a waste, but it's required now to have a backup poll book, so. So, that's cool. Any other?
Yeah, how, how long do you suppose we'll have to have a backup?
For the paper poll book?
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, I would think probably two years because elections, there's only two to four a year. So, to really prove itself, it's going to take it a little time, so I would say that long.
Sorry, to push a little bit further. So, if it crashes and, you know, you drop it, you could drop a computer and the hard drive is gone, and then all the information on there is gone. So, does it back up throughout the day to like a modem? Does it, so that if it does crash, you lose 50% instead of 100% or, I mean?
I'm assuming there's a stick involved, the data is, this, that's a good question. I'm assuming that there is a M-stick involved, you know, stick involved that data's continually entered onto, and so you would only lose to the crash.
Okay.
One of the reasons that I wanted to buy the, there's two versions of this machine, and one of the reasons I want to buy the version that's on an actual kiosk that turns is for one thing, it's a lot less likely to walk out of the room, like, you know, if it's on a stand. Not that it's ever going to be unattended by any means, but just my paranoid thought, but also it's pretty stable. So, it's going to turn, it's going to turn, it's connected to the kiosk, and so it's not, and it's a stable base, and so it's not going to, it's not rattly or loose in any way, so it's pretty safe.
Did you say they're connected to each other?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, they keep the voter numbers-
So, that would be a backup, two, I assume, right?
Yes, right. If one went down, they keep going on all the others. And they don't, like, one crashes, the rest don't. I mean, they keep going, so.
Yeah, I mean, one reason I just ask is because, I mean, I know the general trend is to go electronic, but with everything that's going on, the paper backup, and that's one reason I feel secure in our voting here is because we have a paper backup. And so, when you're talking about not having paper backup and then if something were to crash or, you know, whatever would happen.
The paper backup generally refers to the actual ballot.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's the more important of the two things, but.
And I think we could, yeah, again, I don't know, I don't, I, with the backup poll book- And I think we could, yeah, again, I don't know, I don't, I, with the backup poll book, we'd be able to continue and record that that person voted. Yeah, it's really, yeah, the, the actual ballot paper backup remains the same. Nothing really is any different with the ballot, so.
I do, though, just want to mention along these lines that one of, you know, the two big threats right now to our democracy are voting machines that don't tabulate accurately what people vote, and then the purging of voters from registration roles. And this is on the registration side, where, or, you know, where you come in and you show who you are. And so while I'm, you know, cautiously optimistic about the technology, I do definitely have some concerns. I know we have a great operation, and I know about your integrity. But, you know, I worry about these machines and the things that can happen without any of us knowing. So that's why I asked about the paper backup because, you know, once you have that paper backup, at least you can compare what's suddenly on your computer screen to this thing on paper that was perhaps accurate last time. Or, you know, I'm going to imagine we keep at least one election back or something. I mean, it's important for us to have these things to cross-reference because in a world where data just disappears all of a sudden, you know, we have to be on guard against that. So that's definitely a concern I have, but I think this sounds like a great way to streamline that process of checking people in.
And Joan, then, once the election's over, somehow you download the data about the new voters, I assume, or?
Yes.
Address changes or whatever, and send that to the state, the giant voter registration
System.
System, which is the thing that's been attacked more, I think.
Right.
Than the individual ones where they would upload it. But you would still have a record here of whose name you had added to it, correct?
Yeah, I'm going to, I have to ask about, right now, if a voter registers online through the WizVote system, the MyVote Wisconsin system, actually. The only thing I get now is an email telling me this voter has registered in your community. Right now, because I'm a Luddite, I print that page and, and highlight their name so that I have a piece of paper that shows that that person has registered in Monona. Because we have to keep a paper copy of a voter registration for four years after they terminate their registration. So you're, if you don't ever terminate your registration, we keep it forever until you, until you're deceased, and then four years after that. So my question to, will be to WAC when I get there, is, so now what about that requirement for that paper backup? And I think that I was told in my query, and I need to verify it, that I can print out still who vote, who registered at this election. I can print out a form for each person.
Okay.
Problem with that is there, there could be eight hundred forms, right? So it's, it's not very green when you look at it that way.
That'd be pretty awful if we had to register eight hundred people on the election.
We've had a lot of registrations.
Couple hundred, yeah.
Yeah. We've had five hundred.
Have we, between the two?
Actually, we've had eight hundred.
Really?
Presidential, yes. People come out of the woodwork. There are many people who don't vote at all, except presidential. Now they're voting governor, too.
Right.
Within the last few years. So it's, anyway, but, there are, there, it's change. It's change in, in going to a paperless world. And, you know, I, I just need to find out by law, what do I need to do? Because this does affect that. But they haven't, you know, they're all like, well, you don't need to keep those records. And I'm like, what?
Does she mind?
Yeah. So we'll, I'm going to follow up with some of these sort of background sort of things. But the system itself just seems like a huge improvement, a huge improvement for accuracy. A lot quicker than two people trying to find a name in a book, if, in two separate books. And, yeah. It's going to be a, a big improvement. Voters seem to really like it, according to the communities that are on, are using it.
As a longtime election inspector, I think, I can really see how this would be awesome compared to all the oddball stuff we run into.
Yes. And the thing that we have with registration forms is we will actually have voters put in their birthdate as 2018. Not, and, and we don't notice it, you know, in the, in the busyness of the day. Trying to get a voter to follow up is virtually, I mean, it's very, very difficult to catch up with a voter after Election Day.
To make a change.
Very difficult, to make, to make a correction, yeah. So it's really difficult. People don't respond to letters or phone calls or emails, so it's very hard to catch up with it. And we are still trying, we're struggling with what's proper photo, or, excuse me, proof of residence when a lease is acceptable but a mortgage is not. I mean, the law is so detailed, it's very, very difficult for us to make sure we're taking the right document even. So we do our very best, but there's always a couple that slip through. And it also, we get, in a presidential election, we'll get a Madison voter. And so we need, this, this system apparently will catch that address is not a valid address for Monona. So we won't have Madison voters anymore. There's always like one or two, you know. It's not a lot, but it's more than you want, you know, so.
Any other questions?
Probably more than you wanted to know. The other part of this is there's going to be wireless modems installed. This is going to be a requirement. So because it's a requirement, I may not need the funding for this. Dane County may cover the cost. This is going to alleviate a lot of strife at the end of the night. At the end of a long election, which Mayor O'Connor can vouch for, it's, there's a lot to do to close up the, close up the polling place and get all the reporting done and get the ballots organized and get everything ready. And one of the things that has to happen is the machine, the entire voter machine has to be brought to City Hall as soon as it possibly can be so that I can plug in the modem that's under the counter, that's the fax machine modem, and modem the results to Dane County. So they've got on top of everything that they're already doing, they've got their clerk going, guys, you know, and what are you doing, and get this here. And because Dane County now has a new requirement that they have to have the reporting done within two hours of the close of polls. So we have been last many times, Monona has, and it's embarrassing.
We have the highest turnout, so.
Yeah, well, that's true, yeah. So what's going to happen is this requirement is the modding has to be wireless modem installed in the actual voting machine. And the election chiefs, chief inspectors will modem right from the polling place. So this is going to save, solve so many issues, save so much time. It's going to be awesome. And the prompt on the screen literally is modem results? Yes. That's what you have to do. So it's, doesn't add to their burden of what they're already doing, and it takes away the stress burden of, of being hounded.
Joan's waiting, come on, come on.
Yes, being hounded. And so, and me being hounded by Dane County. Where's your results?
Will you have to have Wi-Fi access, like at St. Stevens?
No, it's wireless.
Or it's wireless, so you won't, that won't matter?
They say it's going to work everywhere, so. So it was going to be a little bit of a cost and to install these, but I'm hoping that it comes true that we won't, that it'll be paid for. In addition to Badger Books, there may be a cost savings. Again, they were talking about trying to look for a less expensive version, but that, I haven't heard anything about it since. If it does, does come in less expensive, then I probably will request to purchase another, another machine at each place, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Did I make it in time? Hey, look at that!
You did, you're one minute late.
Yeah.
I guess we'll accept that. In fact, I think this, oh, I thought this clock was fast, but I guess not. Anyway, that is all of our presentations for tonight. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Mark, could you email this out to the council?
Yeah.
This afternoon, you did it?
Yes.
Oh, you did?
I don't know if everybody's going to be here next Monday, so just in case somebody's gone. Just the process. Well, the big ones, the big dollar amount ones will be on Monday. But if you have all your budget amendments to me, if you want them on the first read, if you can get them by September twenty-seventh, which is a week from Wednesday, that'd be great, and get those to me. You know, you can always wait till the very end, but also, if you want them in the pack, we'd like to have them by the twenty-seventh.
They won't be voting on it till the fifteenth.
Right, so if you want it for the first read, talk to them.
First read's the fifteenth, or the first.
I mean, I guess if you know the amendments, but that's not very much time to ask people, to get people to, we can try to do it.
Right.
At least, that's like two and a half days.
Right. If you know the first, if you want it for that first read, otherwise, you can still bring them in.
So, I'm sorry, clarify, the first read is on the first or the fifteenth?
The first. And then we'll vote on the fifteenth.
Okay.
And then we'll be starting operating. We have to figure that out. I guess the committee, the whole, I don't, have we set those dates? I can't even remember.
It's at the time they save the dates.
Okay. We'll need to confirm that. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, we are adjourned.